Hello, everyone. My name is Nia Bailey and I welcome you to tonight's Altadena Sierra Madre Pasadena Unified School Board Candidate Engagement Forum and the LBJ Hickam Bottom Boardroom at the Pasadena Unified School District. But before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that our event is being held on the ancestral and traditional lands of the Hahamunga Tangva people who historically inhabited the San Gabriel Valley area around present-day Pasadena and Altadena. We honor their connection to this region and on this Indigenous Peoples' Day, give thanks for the opportunity to live, work, learn, and engage with our public schools in their traditional homeland. Please take a moment of silence to pay respect to the elders and to all Gabriolino and Tangva people past and present. And now, welcome to our unified forum. We chose the word "unified" because for the first time, six parent engagement groups: the African-American Parent Council of PUSD, the Pasadena Education Network, the Foster Youth Council, the Special Education Community Advisory Council, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, and the PTA Council of PUSD have come together in common purpose to host a School Board Candidate Engagement Forum. Representatives from each of those groups are standing with me now. We chose to be unified because family engagement in education matters. From closing opportunity gaps to ensuring that every child has access to a healthy, supportive, educational environment, we are stronger together, unified in common purpose for the equitable future we dream of. We thank you for taking the time out of your busy lives to engage with these candidates who are asking for your vote on November 8th. It matters. Public education is a partnership and the sacred commitment we make ensures that all of our children have the opportunity to achieve their full potential. By being here or by tuning in at home, you demonstrate that commitment and for that, we are grateful. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the valued support of Pasadena Media for their technical assistance. Since 1983, Pasadena Media has inspired dialogue, fostered freedom of expression, and bridged diverse communities. Their purpose is to promote, coordinate, facilitate, produce, and assist public service programming on behalf of all public and community access channels. We value their partnership to ensure that we can all appreciate and benefit from this event tonight. We'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters Pasadena Chapter for their moderating of tonight's forum. And so it gives me no greater pleasure than to introduce you, to our lead moderator from the League of Women Voters, Ms. Robbie Davis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the PUSD Districts 1 and 3 Candidate Forum. We thank the sponsors, the candidates, and you for your participation. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area and we assist in forums like this as part of our voter service program. The League studies and acts on public policy issues, but we never endorse or support candidates or parties. And in addition, the League requires all forum cosponsors to sign a memorandum of understanding stipulating that they will not endorse any candidate in this election prior to the forum. Although I am a Pasadena resident, I do not live in either District 1 or District 3 nor do I have any children in the Pasadena school system. In the November 8th election, there are two candidates competing for a seat in District 1 and two candidates competing for a seat in District 3. This is a term of four years. And I have a special note. District 1 candidate Rita Miller has withdrawn from the race, but her name remains on the ballot because it happened too late to get it reprinted. Also, District 3 candidate Michelle Richardson-Bailey cannot be here this evening as she has suffered a death in her immediate family. She has submitted a statement that I will read when the other candidates give their opening statements. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the rest of the League team. In addition to myself, we have Karen Roberson, who will be serving as timekeeper. We also have Bonnie Skolnick and Jean Buneagle, who are serving as question sorters. So I'll now explain the rules for the forum, which have been agreed to by the candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement about themselves and their candidacy. They'll be speaking just in order of, as you see up here. The timekeeper will keep the candidates informed of the time remaining and raise a red card, the dreaded red card, when their time has elapsed. Once a candidate's time is up, he or she should include their statement as quickly as possible. And the candidates have also been cautioned that personal attacks against an opponent are not acceptable and will be refused by the moderator. After the statements are completed, candidates will begin answering audience questions. Please look for runners who will be circulating through the room with cards and pencils and they'll deliver your questions to the question sorters. And we have some rules for the questions. We're going to only accept written questions and they must be in the form of a question and not a statement. They may be directed at one candidate or to all of them, but if they are directed at one candidate, the other candidates may answer if they wish. And if there are several questions on a similar issue, they may be grouped together. And the team of League volunteers is entirely and solely responsible for screening and editing these questions. And they're instructed, that's consistent with League policy, to exclude any questions that are a personal attack or on a candidate or to deal with an issue that is outside of this election. If you feel your question has been misinterpreted, you can submit another one. And due to time limitations, not every question may be asked. And all these questions, asked or unasked, remain the property of the League of Women Voters and they're never distributed to the press or to any other third parties. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question and that again will be tracked by the timekeeper and there will be no rebuttals. And approximately 6:15, the question period will be terminated and closing statements will begin. Each candidate will have one minute and statements will be given in the reverse order from the opening statements. Remarks will conclude at that time. And if you have additional questions, please feel free to discuss them with the candidates following the conclusion of the forum. And finally, League policies specify that no campaign activity, including distribution of flyers, display of T-shirts, buttons, whatever, is allowed in this room. And there's a table provided outside in case the candidates had literature that they would like to distribute. And we also request that everyone take a moment to turn off your cellphone or put it into silent mode just to show respect for the candidates and for the other audience members. So, any questions? If not, we'll begin the opening statements and the first candidate to speak will be District 1 candidate Billy Malone. Mr. Malone?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Is that working? Okay, good. My name is Billy Malone. And just to tell you a bit about myself, I mean, and who I am, most of you don't know me. I'm just a PUSD proud parent. And my daughter's going to graduate next year and I could not be more proud of her and way to go, PUSD, for giving us that experience. None of us know what it's like to grow up with somebody else. We don't know how other people experience things. I grew up in council houses. My parents were uneducated. They left school at 13. So they always thought schools as an institution to be feared. It's just like any other big institution. So I'm really big on outreach. I'm really big in getting involved in the community. Later on, you can ask me about, I got involved in civic organizations simply because my wife's disabled about a decade ago. And I use every piece of experience I can get to make sure I support what I can. And I can tell you later on, programs that I've actually adopted and created and I want to adopt that into PUSD.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny?
Hi, my name is Kim Kenny. I'm a 28-year Altadena resident. My background professionally is as a programmer in the financial industry. My kids started in the district back in the '03-'04 school year and went to Burbank, Longfellow, Elliott, and Blair. At the time, I was a very involved parent advocate. I served on-site councils and PTAs at my kids' schools and then moved up to district-level committees. I've served on the board since 2011. I was elected once at large and then twice as the District 1 representative. I've served on all of the different board subcommittees over time, as well as on several state-level committees. I believe in transparency and integrity so that we can keep the trust of our stakeholders. I believe in basing our program and fiscal decisions on data and results. I believe in closing the opportunity gap for all of our students. And I believe in engaging our families as true partners.
Thank you. Whoa. Okay, and so now we will hear from Mr. Amsbree, who is a candidate for District 3.
Thank you. My name is Pat Amsbree. I'm a product of public schools and a community-minded small business owner. I've lived in Pasadena for 20 years. I'm a husband. I'm the father of two college graduate boys. I'm a founder of nonprofit called Friends of Madison Elementary, which is a nonprofit my wife and I started six years ago to specifically service the educational and resource inequity at Madison Elementary. I'm a board member of the Rose Bowl Aquatic Center, so I'm deeply involved in the safety of children. What I stand for is early reading intervention, so all kids can read at grade level by third grade. I demand accountability and transparency from everyone, from the superintendent on down. I advocate for competitive pay for teachers and all staff. And I'm also big on equitably increasing resources for all students, so all students can thrive.
Thank you. And now I will read the statement from Michelle Richardson-Bailey, who is also a candidate for District Number 3, who cannot be here. "Good evening. I regret not being able to join you for what I'm sure will be a very useful and informative candidate forum. Unfortunately, I lost my twin sister to cancer and must be with my family in Tennessee at this time. That said, I would like to bring to your attention some of the things I have accomplished as a current board member and areas of priority if I am reelected. After being employed with the Pasadena Unified School District, I thought about how to utilize my knowledge and skills to better serve the district and the community and quickly realized that the best way to serve was to be on the school board. As I thought about what I wanted to be a champion for, the following three areas quickly rose to the top of my priority list. Working to ensure quality and equitable education in our schools, ensuring that adequate resources are provided to our neediest students, representing the underrepresented minority perspective on the school board to adequately reflect our diverse community, workforce housing for PUSD employees. I have accomplished much of what I set out to do and I am most proud of authorizing two resolutions: PUSD's commitment to Black students and PUSD's commitment to Latinx students, which drives much of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that is currently being done in the district. If the community sees fit to return me to office, my priorities over the next four years will include working with community stakeholders to bring vocational education back to our schools. Our purpose as a school system is to prepare our students for college, careers, and life. While we strive to prepare all students for college, some may choose to enter the world of work right away. I am working with key partners to make these opportunities available to our students. Addressing areas of disproportionality to promote equity and fairness for all students, my definition of equity is every student getting what they need when they need it. This therefore means that every student, especially those who have traditionally been underserved, will get the services and support they need in order for them to be successful. Creating policy for establishing inclusive classrooms throughout the district for students with special needs. Students with special needs deserve to be educated as much as possible with their peers in general education. Additionally, all educators in our school system must have this mindset so that all students get what they need in a supportive and welcoming environment. And finally, continued advocacy for workforce housing. Approximately 60% of our teaching force live outside of the district boundaries with many traveling great distances to serve our students. This is because of the high cost of housing in our area. I thank you for your time and ask that you give me the privilege to continue serving you as your representative on the PUSD Board of Education." So that's Michelle Richardson-Bailey. So we'll start with our questions. And we're going to rotate who starts first. And so we have a real basic question to begin with. What are the most important issues facing the district now? And we'll start with Ms. Kenny.
I think the most important issues right now are adapting to the effects of the pandemic. We know that kids, some did well during remote learning and others not as well. We are choosing to accelerate learning, but we know we have to be mindful of gaps that kids might have developed during the remote learning part of that year or so. I think that's, we're asking a lot of our teachers. They're dealing with that kind of learning experience and also really working on social, emotional issues with our students as well. And so we need to be supportive of our staff who are dealing with social, emotional, as well as our students. So that's, you know, then there were all the things that were happening before that time, but those are some of the big ones for this next little while. Equity is a big issue and we have a lot of groups that need it.
Thank you. Mr. Amsbree?
Thank you. I would echo many of the statements that Ms. Kenny said, but I would add that beyond the social, emotional, learning gap and the educational gap that we have, that we have an exigent need to address certain areas of our learning, including special education, including early reading intervention. Only 50% of our third graders can read at grade level at this point, which is a really travesty. And you'll hear this word from me a lot tonight, which is transparency and accountability. And we need transparency in this district and we need accountability from the superintendent on down. We have a large budget and we need to make sure that it's being spent appropriately for the right programs, for the right kids, in equitable fashion for all school sites.
Thank you. And Mr. Malone? The most important issues?
I'd say the first, it might sound strange, but I say that we have a PR issue, a big-time PR issue. One of the things is we wait for people to come to the board meetings with public comments for issues that's happening in the district. And honestly, for me personally, obviously data is important, statistics and data, and we use that. I do have an engineering background, so I understand the importance of usage of that. But one of the things we don't do is we don't go out to the community and speak to them and find out what their needs are. What most people need is not help, they need opportunities. And what we need to do is make sure people know those opportunities are there and we need to actually reach them. And I think that piece of puzzle is completely missing. Like I say, from my background in government housing, my parents wouldn't have dreamed of going into a school and speaking to a teacher. They wouldn't, they felt uncomfortable. So we need to go out and get that information and base real change on real information from the general public. Remember, a room full of noise, the silent majority is not heard. And so I believe that the biggest problem we have is making sure that we hear the whole district, not just those that are showing up at board meetings.
Thank you. And kind of following on with transparency and things, one of the questions is what's the best way to make the PUSD budget transparent and understandable to the community? And we'll start with Mr. Amsbree.
Thank you. The best way is to produce the entire budget, not just sections of the budget or truncated, dumbed-down sections of the budget available on the website. The entire budget needs to be held transparent and on the website and be made available. And there should be sessions where the budget can be explained to those that are interested in learning more. And that way, with knowledge becomes understanding. And it will be through that knowledge and understanding that we'll all be able to hold the superintendent accountable for the proper expenditure of those funds.
Thank you. Mr. Malone?
I agree with that. We need to make sure that there's accountability in budget. We need to make sure it's transparent. We need to make sure it's accessible and we need to make sure it's understandable. And that goes without saying. But on top of that, I also feel like we also stop and prevent ourselves from doing things because we use the budget as an excuse not to do it. Everything from closing schools, I'm a big proponent on not closing schools. And that is an issue that I feel is important and we use the budget as an excuse to do that. The problem with closing schools is we don't actually close schools, they become a transition. None of the schools have actually closed. Don't let people tell you that. They've transitioned into charter schools and public schools. Every campus UC's closed up in the north side in Altadena where District 1 is, they've all transitioned to other schools. So we use the budget as excuses for why we're doing things. And what happens is that gives other people, other parents, more choices to not send their kids to PUSD. So yes, we have to be transparent with the budget, but we also have to be sensible and not make it dictate our decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny?
Well, this is a subject near and dear to my heart, as I'm sure many of you know. We, on the board, well, we used to have a finance committee and several years ago that went away. And unfortunately, right as the pandemic started, we started our Budget Transparency Task Force. And that was a little hard to do during the pandemic. We met several times and we created a list of areas that we thought needed to have more transparency in the budget and how to do it, the types of reports that people need to see. We say accessible, we say understandable, and it's really translating that into something that's meaningful to people. It can't be at too detailed a level, it needs to be high level, but it needs to be understandable. It needs to, we need to be able to communicate the big picture ideas and then we can make the right decisions. We need to be able to understand the trade-offs of doing this with the money or this, but we need to know how much we have and we need to know what we're spending it on today.
Thank you. Let's see, there has been a mention, a brief mention of charter schools. What are your thoughts on charter schools? And we'll start with Mr. Malone.
As I mentioned, in District 1 where I'm at, every school that closes has become a charter school. And I've done a lot of community outreach because I service the community quite a lot anyway because I'm on the Altadena Town Council. I've been there for a number of years. I talk with the community all the time. The community up there feels disenfranchised by PUSD because of the moving in of charter schools. They moved in because the opportunity arose. So was there a need? I can't, I can't talk to people and say, the way to bring people back to public school is not by telling them the choices are wrong, it's to make public schools a better choice and work on them and make them the better choice that they're going to choose to do. So charter schools exist, whether you like it or not, they're there. And some of them, like Learning Works and stuff like this, work with PUSD. But the point is, is that whether you like them or not, they're there. But what we got to do is we have to focus on PUSD and bringing PUSD back in the fold and making sure that PUSD is the school of choice among all the others. And we can do that, it's just a question of being positive.
Ms. Kenny?
There are different types of charter schools and I know there are big corporations that have multiple charter schools and we actually had one of those in our district, Solarity, and that charter school is no longer here. We know we have schools like Learning Works Charter that focus on a very specific need that this district isn't fulfilling for dropout students. So, do parents have choice? Should parents have choice? We are big proponents within our district of choice and these charters have arisen because parents want other choices. If parents were completely satisfied with PUSD, I'm not sure that these charters would have students. But I think we also have to understand that the legislative landscape has changed for charters. Laws were passed just before the pandemic that are going to make charters very hard, it's going to be hard for them to renew their charters. They're going to have to meet a lot of student outcomes before we can give them a renewal. So I think we're going to see fewer charter schools, but while we have them, while we have chartered them, we do need to treat them fairly. We need to keep those campuses up.
Thank you. Mr. Amsbree?
Thank you. Notwithstanding the law that Ms. Kenny referenced, I'm generally not a fan of charter schools. There are some exceptions like Learning Works that was mentioned, but essentially, each charter school takes resources and students away from PUSD. And the better that we can meet the needs of the students and the parents with the programming and the special education resources with the early literacy intervention that we have available to us at PUSD, the better we're meeting those needs, the less need there will be for choice for parents and it will help increase enrollment at PUSD.
Thank you. We'll pivot a little bit and talk about special education services. Have a couple of questions that kind of fit together. What do you believe are the main problems affecting the delivery of special education services? Any ideas for solutions? And what kind of policies are needed to strengthen the relationship between the district staff and the parents' community? And we'll start with Ms. Kenny.
Easy, right? I can just in one minute solve all these problems. You know, this is a very complex area. I think something that I have noticed is that, that the relationship between our parents and our staff and our district can be troubled at times. I think there's a lack of trust that could come because this is a very litigious type of, this is an area where there's a lot of opportunities to make mistakes, there's a lot of laws and things required. But I think if we can change to a culture of really working with our parents and not against them, that would be extremely helpful. I would really like to look at our special ed staffing ratios and ensure that we have the right number of adults and that they have good credentials to be serving the students. Gosh, this is a big area and there's more.
Thank you. Mr. Amsbree?
Thank you. The special education system with PUSD is broken right now and it needs to be fixed. There's currently so many litigations, special problems that exist between parents, and there is a lack of trust. And it's a lack of trust that is the district's fault. The district has not done a good job of earning the trust. When an IEP takes one year to get and another year to get an update, that engenders a lack of trust. We need to really start fresh. We need more special ed teachers. We need more special ed aides in the classroom. We need more resources. And we also have to understand that every special ed student is different. Every student learns differently and every student needs a different IEP and a different plan to help them learn appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Malone?
Hi. Well, I'm dyslexic myself. I had issues going through school, so I know exactly what that was like. I know what it was like to be treated as if I was stupid. I wasn't allowed to do science in high school, but I decided to go. I didn't believe what people say is how you define yourself, which I always tell our kids, is how you define yourself and others define you. When it comes to special needs like this, we had the answer and we chose not to do it. When I talk about PR issues with PUSD, Loma Alta is a school, was an elementary school at the top in our area that closed. A lot of people talked bad of it because it had low test scores. It had low test scores because it was the highest, it had the highest concentration of special ed students in the entire PUSD district. Every area of the campus had ramps and accessibility for ADA that no other school had. So it had the largest percentage of special needs students in the district, which kept the test scores down. But because of that, it had two teachers in every classroom. Every student had a computer. They had a huge follow, support of Parent Teachers Association, but we closed it.
Thank you. Sort of, continuing on with the individualized education, special education, one of the questions that this sponsor submitted is Black students with individualized, whoops. We love technology, don't we? Yes. Okay. Black students with individualized education programs are one of the most marginalized student populations. What ideas do you have for providing an environment that truly fosters diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging specifically with regard to Black students with individualized education programs? And we'll start with Mr. Amsbree.
Thank you. Well, the first thing that I would ask is why can't we include African-American students in our English language learner program? When we have a high percentage of African-American students that aren't reading at grade level, why can't we provide those extra resources for those students? grade level, why can't we provide those extra resources, uh, for those students early on? Early intervention is the key. So I would start there and equity, um, access, uh, inclusion, opportunity, those are all words until they're put into action. And we need to make sure that we have a plan in place that is going to put those words into action and deliver the type of equity that all students deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Malone.
Hi. I, it really bothers me personally when we judge things by statistics on a piece of paper. We're more than individual, we're, we're more than an individual number. We need to start treating people as individuals and when we focus on the individual, everything else comes into play. When we wonder why one group does differently than another group, then, then, then let's start playing with a number. Let's find out why that is an issue. And like I say, outreach, go to the communities, find out what's happening, find out what's going on, because it's of, sometimes more than the sum of its numbers. And, and that goes true of any particular group, whether you're talking about people with, you know, families with food insecurities, uh, in, housing insecurities, finance, culture, race, religion, sexual identity, ability, um, whatever it is, that goes down to it all. But what we need to do is focus on the individual and the individual needs and do the outreach, find out what's bringing that there rather than telling them what their, what their problem is.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny.
An interesting article that I read today was talking about speech and language and black students being identified, well, both over identified and under identified for speech and language. And I, I think that's, uh, an interesting problem that we have in that some students are being identified who shouldn't be, but we are missing other students. And so I think looking at that issue is really important. How are we going to include our special ed students in our general ed, uh, classrooms? I think that's something that we, we kind of talk about, we touch on it from time to time, but we haven't made a significant commitment to doing it and then followed through. I, I don't think it's something that happens in one year. I think it's going to happen over, uh, several years, but we have to start. And, and I encourage staff, I try to encourage staff and I have in the past and I'll keep doing it, to start us on that path, because it, again, it's not going to happen overnight.
Thank you. And sort of continuing on with kind of a similar, um, theme, um, as a percentage of school population, PUSD supports almost twice as many youth in out of home care as compared to surrounding districts. How does your experience prepare you to guide the district in addressing the complex educational challenges of youth in foster care? And we'll start with Mr. Malone.
Again, I, I, I state that it's about knowing the individual and the individual needs. I would tell you that my grandmother is a product of foster care and I remember growing up in, as I say, in government housing and we would, when she was bedridden and we tried to put a, uh, an appliance to heat her bedroom, she was terrified. We couldn't put, heat her house because the red light that shined on the appliance used to remind her of being locked in a coal shed and burnt with cigarettes as a foster child. It's not about just what happens in the foster care system, it's what happens to their extended family and their children as they grow older. We focus on one thing, but a foster child is more than, again, the individual, that some of their families, that some of their families are going to be. We've got to focus on the whole picture with foster youth and stop treating them as, um, an unidentifiable unit that needs, again, everybody needs opportunity and how do we approach that?
Thank you. Ms. Kenny.
I was lucky enough to get to be on a committee representing PUSD, uh, on the foster youth issue and, um, along with LAUSD and some other districts. And they wanted us to look at it from the board perspective. There's a lot of foster youth initiatives that are more from the ground up and they also want to approach it kind of from that policy, um, look. So I learned a lot about it and, you know, one of the big issues can be mobility and I've asked our staff, um, to really ensure that we are doing best interest determination. So if students do change where they are living, they have that opportunity to continue their schooling, so they're not constantly moving between schools. But I, I really think that we have to focus on academics. So often our foster youth work is focused on social, emotional and, and academics gets a little bit of a short shift. And, and we get a funds, our supplemental and concentration funds to work with these students, but it's not as focused as it needs to be.
Thank you. Mr. Amspry.
Uh, first I'd like to applaud the district for some of the work that's been done over the last year of shining a spotlight on foster youth. I think that's a, a start. But in my world, things don't take a year or two years or three years, things happen quickly. And we need more dedicated staff, more dedicated funding, um, and we need long terms with sustainability for these programs. And these are types of things that, uh, as a board member, I would write into the roles and responsibilities and into the plan, uh, of accountability for the superintendent. So the superintendent is held accountable. So I wouldn't ask the staff or plead with the staff or remind the staff, I would hold the superintendent accountable for making it happen.
Thank you. And that kind of feeds into a couple of questions that sort of, um, relate to that. Um, one of them is, is how do you see the school board's members' role in relationship to the superintendent? If you get informed about a, a concern, how would you respond and how would you, um, hold the superintendent accountable, um, for making a change if, if appropriate? And we'll start with Ms. Kenny.
We do get approached often as board members, um, by constituents with specific problems for their family, sometimes more systems, system wide problems. We are often cautioned not to solve problems, not to promise things because, uh, the board or a single board member really can't make a promise and keep it. So our, um, approach, what we do is to inform staff, uh, maybe it's a question and we get a response from staff and then share it out with our constituents. Sometimes there's a misunderstanding of how the system works, uh, and that needs to be clarified, but I think it's important to always answer people. I try to answer anyone who has approached me with questions, uh, give them the information they need. And I do follow up and ensure as best I can that situations are solved. Uh, I always ask that parents let me know if they haven't, uh, got a resolution to their issues.
Thank you. Mr. Amspry.
The board acts as a unit. No single board member makes, uh, uh, a solution in, in and of his or herself. They act as a unit and, um, the board needs to be together when they're helping to solve problems. And when the problems are well defined and brought to the superintendent, uh, for a resolution, it's that, at that time that the superintendent is given a goal to solve that problem and is held accountable for that goal. And is held accountable for solving that problem or dealing with that problem in a reasonable amount of time, not taking one year to respond to an IEP issue or six months to respond to a problem that's happening at a school site, but a reasonable amount of time, a week, a two weeks, three weeks maximum. The board needs to hold the superintendent accountable and the board works together to do that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Malone.
Hi. Well, the, uh, the superintendent works for the board and, you know, I've managed lots of, lots of businesses and, um, you know, you're responsible for your employees. So yes, you know, you, as, as a board, the board should actually, you know, issues what needs to be done to the superintendent. The superintendent follows that, but then as an employee, it's also the board's responsibility to make it happen. And if the superintendent isn't doing his duty, then it's up to the board as the governing body to actually govern. So it's as simple as that. The board also has to take responsibility for their actions.
Thank you. We have a question about curriculum here. What will you do to provide transparency to parents and the public on what is being taught in PUSD and to keep ethnic studies and other curriculum positive and free of extreme ideology, antisemitism, and political bias? And we'll start with Mr. Amspry.
That's a great question and I am proud to live in a state, in a county, in a city where that is not an exigent issue, but it's one that's very important. And transparency, again, and accountability are two words I told you you'd hear a lot from me tonight. And we have to be accountable for the type of curriculum that we teach our kids to make sure we're teaching them real history and real things and real things that happened. And we need to be transparent with our parents, uh, with exactly what we're teaching, whether that's through back to school night, through that's through other meetings where we do go and do a deeper dive into the curriculum, where we share the actual curriculum and textbooks and the extra reading and all the other materials with the parents. Transparency is the key and accountability is what the glue that holds it together.
Mr. Malone.
I'm, I'm going to read you something that I, I, I wrote in reflection to public schools. Uh, it's just a brief sentence, that they should be the very place that becomes more than the sum of its test scores and becomes an unclouded measure of success that is greater than numbers alone. They should embrace our societal blend, believe in everyone, be a safe place for our kids where they feel they are not judged by who they are or where they come from, but inspired to become who they dream to be. When, when we're talking about that question, public schools is the very heart of our democracy. So ideologies that are not shared or, um, or hinder other, other, other viewpoints should, is, is not a place in public school. Public place of school is to, to rejoice in each one of our differences and our blends and to make everyone successful by doing so. So that needs to be front and center and obviously if anything isn't like that, then there needs to be transparency on showing that.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny.
I know this is, is a hot topic right now, uh, across the country and there is built into our current system, a significant amount of transparency around our curriculum, how we choose our curriculum. I've often, as a parent, taken opportunity to go and look at new, um, instructional materials that were being proposed. They are typically put in a public place so that people can go and look at them. You know, I think there are very specific topics, uh, and subjects where people, uh, and parents are concerned. I know that sexual health is one of those, that's something that we also make available to parents and I believe they have, um, the option to opt their students out. I think this was a, a very exciting, uh, thing to start with our ethnic studies course. I, uh, know that our staff took care to make sure that it wasn't biased in any kinds of ways, but this is something where parents can always go and see what's being taught in the classroom and.
And? Okay, let's see. What should our schools, excuse me, do to support immigrant families and their communities? And we'll start with Mr. Malone. What, um, what should our schools do to support immigrant families and their communities?
I'm sorry. I, 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 I think I kind of answered that in many different ways in the sense that I think it goes down to the individual and we also need to make sure that, and, and you know, I'm an immigrant and I, because I come from Europe, I think I was treated differently. But we need to treat people the same and all immigrant families need to be treated the same with the same opportunities. And I think it goes back to just what I was saying before, that people need opportunities. It's not the help, they need opportunities. And if we're given the opportunities, it's a level playing, level playing field for everybody. And I think that if we, if everybody has the same opportunity, so we need to make sure the opportunity then, that, you know, anyway, um, I guess that's it.
Okay, okay. Ms. Kenny.
I think first of all, we need to be very welcoming to our families. It's, it's, it's not always that our, our school offices and other buildings are seen as welcoming to all parents. We need to ensure that we are making information and, uh, everything else available in multiple languages, you know, that there are people who can translate for our families. And a big part of this is really helping parents understand our system so that they can best advocate for their students. So, uh, American education may not be something that, uh, immigrant families understand, but it's so important. I think anyone who's a parent knows how many times you have had questions or have had to, um, ask someone and intervene for your students, even if it's to clarify something. And we need to help parents understand how to do that, uh, and reach out to them, not wait for them to come to us with questions.
Thank you. Mr. Amspry.
The short answer is a lot. We need to do a lot for our immigrant families, particularly our Latinx families. They are oftentimes unable or unwilling to advocate for themselves, um, for fear of immigration status or other fears. We need to advocate for them. We need to provide, um, uh, and, and, and overabundance of resources, uh, not just equitable resources, but an overabundance of equitable resources to our immigrant families, uh, to make sure that they do feel welcome, um, that they do know where they can go for different types of resources, to provide, uh, a welcoming place for them to be and to exist as, not only as students who are very scared when they come to a new country, not speaking the language and not understanding what's going on, but for their families who feel the same way. So the, the long answer is a lot.
That was a short answer though. Thank you. And to kind of move on with the same, um, we have a question that says the major concern for parents of English language learners is for their child to reclassify during the elementary school years. And then sort of this fits in with another question is like, what do you think is important for these English language learners to learn? Aside from just language, what is, what is the, what are things that they need to know to be successful? And we'll start with, uh, Ms. Kenny.
This is a really important area and it's unfortunately one that suffered a little bit during the pandemic because I, it was difficult to assess kids and so I don't think as many of our students were assessed and reclassified. We, we meet the state average for reclassification numbers, but that's too low. We really do need to focus on reclassifying our students before they go to middle school. Once they're in secondary, they need to take an extra class period every day of English language development in addition to English language arts and they miss out on electives, on things that make class and school interesting and engaging for them. So how do we do this? And, and I think it's really, really important that every single grade level in an elementary school understands their part. So kindergarten teach, it's, this is not a fifth grade job, this is not a fourth grade job. This is something that needs to happen, a big chunk needs to happen in kinder, first grade, second grade.
Thank you. Mr. Amspry.
I would, uh, just to echo Ms. Kenny's statement, um, it's early language intervention is the key to, uh, reclassifying at the end of, uh, elementary school. We must, we have to start early and teach these kids and, and why not, why not enroll Spanish language children in a dual language immersion program like we enroll English first kids into a Spanish language dual immersion program? That would be a great way to start, to assimilate, um, yet for them to maintain the importance of their culture and where they came from. And reclassifying, uh, shouldn't, uh, be something that's forced upon the kids when they're not ready. Right now we have 50% literacy rate, uh, at the end of third grade and, um, it's pretty tough to get from 50% to 100% from third grade to the end of fifth grade. So early English language literacy is the key.
Thank you. Mr. Malone.
Hi. Also, I, I keep repeating the same thing, it's, it's focus on the individual and individual needs. So if you're talking of, uh, English learners, we need to focus on their needs. And we need to, and, and as Pat mentioned too, I mean, there are dual language programs where they, they can learn in English, but what is it? When we classify somebody by numbers and we talk about, oh, that they're not reaching it because of the certain parameters, when we don't actually go and when we don't actually go and find out the individual, I mean, the reason why those numbers might be low is because they don't speak very good English. And we're judging them on their English, not on their actual academic achievements. And so we focus on what the needs are for the English learners. As I say, I mean, obviously, it's, but what can we do to improve upon that to the individual? And talking about early literacy, I mean, that's so important and how we can improve that. Because at grade three, we keep bringing up, that's when we change from learning to read to reading to learn. So that for English learners should be the focus because the third grade is when you start reading to learn.
Thank you, thank you. Let's pivot to a little bit different issue. The importance of technology has become very evident since the onset of COVID. What are your ideas to increase the district's technology capabilities? And we'll start with Mr. Amosbury.
Thank you. Well, it's great now that I believe every student gets a Chromebook, which is wonderful. And we need to start making sure that the kids are learning on the Chromebook, learning how to use the Chromebook, how to use the programs, how to use the programs that they will need when they go to college or they enter the workforce. And so the use of the technology needs to be integrated into the curriculum. And a lot of kids don't have access to technology at home. And it's the one Chromebook that they have. So there needs to be extra elective classes of brown technology on how to use the equipment, on how to use the programs, elective classes. And we need to put an emphasis on that, really starting early on in the fourth or fifth grade.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Well, technology is obviously where our society is headed. And whether, you know, many of us are still struggling with, at our ages, to learn the latest technology. But, you know, I remember my daughter, when she was three, and she said, Dad, why are you using Google, why are you using Windows Explorer? Google Chrome's much better, you know? So they already got a startup from us. But to get to the latest technology is also not cheap. It's, we have to fund it. And I know that I'm a big proponent on putting your money where your mouth is. So I just want to let it out, that, you know, measure, oh, we'll also bring a lot of money into the district. And I was not just for it, I voted for it. We need to do everything we can to get the funding to support the needs of the students and especially in this technology area because it doesn't come free and it is the future. So we have to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
As a daughter of a middle school librarian, I just have a soft spot in my, soft spot in my heart for books. So tech's wonderful, but certainly at our younger grades, I hope we do a lot of hands-on learning and don't forget print. But I think we can't forget that even though the learning at home part of the pandemic is over, that connectivity is still really, really important for our kids. And I'm not sure that every student has it, and that's something we need to continue to focus on. We know that there's a lot of educational technology in our classrooms, but we want to make sure we're using it in a smart way, that we're not just getting every latest program in, but that we are finding ones that are really helpful, useful, that work for the kids. And then I do think we need to look at computer science and coding and opportunities in our high schools for our students so that they're prepared for their careers.
Thank you. What is your position on class size? Should the district spend more money to decrease class size? And we'll start with Mr. Malone.
When it comes to class size, I mean, the biggest thing is, are we reaching the student? It doesn't matter if we have 10 kids in the classroom, 15 kids in the classroom, 20 kids or 30 or 40 kids in the classroom, are we reaching those students? And if we're reaching those students, and it costs us, the cost, it costs the same to run a classroom, whether you have 20 kids, 30 kids. The classroom cost is the same. And one of the things that I, I'm not happy with is the fact that we're, our funding comes from the amount of kids that are enrolled in the school. And the, if we don't increase enrollment, we lose funding. But we also have to make sure that we're reaching the students. And I think that doing, I don't know, maybe Ms. Kenny probably knows more than me from some of her information. But I think class size is also depending on grade levels, depending on, you know, certain grade levels that will do better functioning with certain numbers. And those statistics, we have to make sure we fall within that realm.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
So whether we should spend dollars on decreasing class size, kind of takes us back to that budget question. You know, we need to understand where the money is being spent today and how much it would cost a lower class size by how many students. And then we can decide, do we want to give up things we are spending money on now and instead spend on lower class size? I think it will be surprising to people how expensive it is to lower class size while you will need more classrooms, which we have space. You will need more teachers. There's a staffing shortage. So there are things to think about moving forward with that. But I think at the same time, we need to recognize, I think this year we have $34 million in our supplemental and concentration funds, which are given to us for low-income English learners and foster youth. These funds can be targeted at certain grade levels, at certain school sites, to lower classrooms where kids have, we've talked about targeting kids with needs, and that's what equity is about. That's what that money is for, and we can certainly lower class size in a targeted way.
Thank you, Mr. Amosbury.
We absolutely need smaller class sizes. And there's no question about it. Whether that's taking one class and removing some of the students and putting them in another class, or including, improving the teacher-to-student ratio by adding a teacher's aide in every class. I would disagree with Billy in that it does matter if there's 10, 20, 40, or 50 people in a class and one teacher. It matters a great deal because one teacher can only focus on one student at a time. So there is a teacher shortage. There's a teacher shortage because we're not paying our teachers enough money. And when we start paying our teachers enough money, we'll find that we have less of a teacher shortage. The reason that many parents send their kids to private schools are many private schools have a 17 to 1 teacher-to-student ratio. Now, can we get to that number? I don't know. Is it a budget problem? Yes, but we put a man on the moon and we can resolve this problem as well.
Thank you. Okay. Not too much audience response here. And so kind of going on with the issue of getting information to make a decision, somebody has written, PUSD board often approves funds for outside consultants, lawyers, and public relations advisors. What prior information do you desire in order to make an informed decision before approving these expenditures? And we'll start with Ms. Kenny.
Interestingly enough, I was taking an education finance course just this last four weeks where they recommended a list of questions for every contract that a district signs. And I said, wow, I'm not sure my district would go for this. The other board members were very excited about it. And it's not just saying, you know, who is this contractor? What have they done before, you know? But it's asking, why are we hiring them? What outcomes are we expecting? And then actually holding them accountable for meeting those outcomes. And that is not something we currently do today. I guess we can see if a newly put-together board wants to do that in December.
Mr. Amosbury.
We, first of all, I don't understand why there's so many contractors and consultants and people that are doing the jobs that we should be doing here with our staff. That's why we have a staff. So if there's a job or something that's not being done, then it sounds like it's a hireable position. And we don't need to pay and outside, I've worked in the businesses where I know what consultants cost. And we absolutely, in the small instances where we do need a specialized consultant to come in, we absolutely need to hold them accountable. Again, transparency and accountable. What is that, what is that consultant going to do? Or what are we charging them to do? And then holding them accountable for doing it or not paying them.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Hi. First, I want to actually, and I'll address that, is that Mr. Ainsby misquoted me when he talking about class size. My daughter has been in classrooms with 40 kids and been in classrooms with 15 kids. And some of the classroom size that may be larger, she's actually excelled him. It depends on the quality of the education in that classroom, not necessarily always the number. The number can count, but both have to be considered.
Okay, but outside consultants?
Yeah, outside consultants. Well, first of all, you always have to go inside first, keep everything in-house, find out if you can get your results first before you go into, everything has to be justified, right? So anytime you have a business, you work with your inside, your inside first, keep everything in-house. If it can't be answered there, only if it can't be answered, then you go to an outside consultant. If you don't have that expertise within your frame, then you do that. And then everything is also, once it goes out, it goes out for bidding and budgeting.
Thank you. We have a question that's sort of on the other end of the academic spectrum. What accommodations are currently available through PUSD to offer appropriate education to a first grader who is reading at fifth grade level? And we will start with Mr. Amosbury.
That's, that's a great question. I was a student who in first grade read at fifth grade level. And my accommodation was I got the sat in the library by myself and read books on my own. I don't know what our current accommodations are. But when we talk about, we spend a lot of time talking about specialized kids and kids that need extra help and early intervention reading. But we haven't spent a lot of time talking about the kids that are on kind of that other end of the pendulum, if you will, that can read well, that are excelling at an earlier age. And do we have programs that are going to meet those particular needs? I mentioned it early that every child learns differently and needs a specialized way to learn. So what are we doing for those kids? That's a great question, and I'd love to learn the answer.
Mr. Malone.
Well, special needs is both ends of the spectrum, right? I mean, it absolutely is both ends of the spectrum. And anyone that's, if they're not being accommodated for their needs at their grade level, then they need to be accommodated. And that should be addressed both from either the teacher in the room and the faculty and everything else. So if you're not reaching the students' needs, then we need to do a better job of reaching them. If we don't have the programs in there, we need the programs in there. Because again, special needs is both ends of the spectrums. One thing we can't do is having a student that is beyond the grade level and getting bored in that classroom because they're not being challenged. Every child, when they go into a classroom, needs not only to learn, but to be challenged so that they can actually expand their learning abilities. And one of the things that we need to do is if it's not being addressed in the classroom from another level, then we need to make sure we have the programs to accommodate that child's needs. That child shouldn't be forgotten, the same as any other child should never be forgotten, no matter what their needs are.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
This is an interesting question for me. Back when I was on school site council at Burbank Elementary, we actually had a goal for high achieving students. It was one of our school plan goals. My son was on the spectrum, but also high achieving. And PUSD did things for my student that I probably could never have gotten from a private school. You know, he was supported where he had needs in terms of speech and language and other, and he had an RSP, those services as well. But he also advanced a grade. And he was also allowed to work ahead in math, even at elementary school. I know we have examples where kids move ahead at middle school and high school, but he was allowed to move ahead at elementary. Now, whether that is a district-wide phenomenon, if you will, or if that is something that was because I had a very understanding principal who wanted to work with parents. But that is something that we should look at how we can give to all students.
Thank you. Question on school safety. It says, school fights have been shared on social media. What do you think are the best ways to guarantee the safety of students in schools? And we will start with Mr. Malone.
I think in today's society, safety is across the board on every level is something that should be taken seriously. If we're not protecting our kids from bullying from each other and fighting on campus, then how can we expect to protect them from greater dangers on our school campuses that we see on our national news every day? Unfortunately, well, I guess the good thing about social media is that we actually are able to monitor what goes on. And I think what we need to do is make sure we monitor closer. And then when we see things, when we can address it in, at the moment and, and at present moment, in the moment, and address it with the student. But what we have to, one thing that we always forget is the student that is often the cause of any issues on campus also have their own things they're dealing with. So one, that we have to have a kind of a no, a no, no accepting policy. But we also have to make sure that whatever other students going through is how to bring them back into the mix afterwards. Don't always forget the student that's left out.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
It is really important that we balance the needs of both students who might be getting into trouble and the other students that they're affecting. One of the things that the board, you know, when expulsions come to us, one of the things we always ask is, you know, what was done for the student before? And sometimes when you, when a student's coming to us for expulsion, you see a long history of suspensions. And it's not always clear how we intervened or what we tried to do to stop that trajectory. But some of that is having counselors, having mental health providers, having the right resources. I think we recognize that our principals and assistant principals are often very overtaxed at their sites. So they do need, we need to make sure that that extra support is there. We also have to keep emphasizing relationships, relationships with teachers, with other staff on campuses, ensure that we have activities for students so that they're engaged in a positive way.
And Mr. Amosbury.
Thank you. I agree with what Ms. Kenny says, particularly about the social emotional part of working with our kids. We need more counselors on campus. I will tell you, I've had parents send me some of these videos of these fights, and they are tough to look at. And we need to prevent them, and we need to do whatever we can to prevent them. So I believe that we need more mental health professionals on our campus to work with these kids, certainly to find the kids that are the repeat offenders and find special help for them. But the goal should not be to expel kids, but to work with them, to integrate them back into society and to our school society and to make sure that they're a contributing member of the school site and the school community.
Thank you. We've had several questions submitted from various and sundry sources talking about how to promote PUSD. What's the best way to attract new families? What would you do to improve community support? What's the role of the board in ensuring that we're actually doing continuous improvement in the district? And how, you know, how to anticipate and respond to the needs of students and their families? So basically, overall, how do we get more families to participate in the public education system here in Pasadena? And we'll start with Ms. Kenny.
I think we've made a lot of efforts over the years to ensure that we are getting good news out. Certainly, when I started in this district, it probably wasn't daily, but certainly several times a week, there were front-page stories that were negative about our high schools and the Star News, back when the Star News wrote about Pasadena. So I think we certainly get a lot of the good news out. And we have focused on marketing a lot with our magnet schools. I think it's twofold. We really need to ensure that we don't overpromise, but we overdeliver. We need to ensure that We need to ensure that we are retaining parents. And I think sometimes we forget that one unhappy parent or family goes out and spreads a lot more ill will about PUSD than we can hope to overcome with our marketing. And so managing the relationships we have, ensuring that our program is the best it can be, I think will be a good way to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Ammiesbury.
Well, I think one way is to start universal preschool and to get kids in our community into the system, into the PSD system early. And the next best way is to produce great student outcomes. That's what ultimately us as parents and everyone as parents are looking at is, is a great school outcome. How can their child finish school prepared for a career or prepared for secondary education? And that's the best way to market the school, if you will. We don't need more marketing, we need better school outcomes. And when people understand that a great education can be had at PUSD and great outcomes are coming to these students, more families are going to want to choose PUSD.
Thank you. Mr. Malone.
Perceptions are all right. We do have really good schools in PUSD. And as a town council member in Altadena, I've supported the evolution of Elliott's Arts Magnet, Altadena Arts Magnet, going from a low enrollment school to a magnet, to French immersion and having a waitlist. Back in 2016, long before I even considered running for school board, as a council member, I was writing letters to Washington DC in support of John Muir, getting the Early Access Program there, which is now being implemented. We have some really good programs, but the problem is people still have the perception that we have bad schools. We have some really good schools and really bad programs. My daughter, we teach her all the time that don't let other people knock you or put you down or talk the negative, that job's already taken. Yours is about telling your story in the best possible way and promoting all the good things we do. And what we need to do, especially as a board, be better ambassadors of PUSD, promote what we're doing that's good and well, and make sure we can expand on that.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we are just about out of time. So what we're going to do now is go through, and each candidate can do a one-minute closing statement. And we will start with Mr. Ammiesbury.
Great. Thank you. My name again is Pat Ammiesbury, representing District Three. I am endorsed by the United Teachers of Pasadena that represents over 800 teachers, school nurses, librarians, speech pathologists. I'm also endorsed by Planned Parenthood, the United, or the Democrats of Pasadena foothills. I'm endorsed by folks like Steve Gibson from the PCC Board, Vice Mayor Andy Wilson, Council Member Jess Rivas, and a lot of local leaders. And I'm the only candidate that I understand has been endorsed by Latino leaders. And as we know, Latinos is the largest group in Pasadena and the largest group in PSD. And I'm very proud to have raised nearly $40,000 to fund my campaign. And I am honored and privileged to be considered for this job, and I humbly ask for your vote if you live in District Three, of course. And I promise that I will do everything I can to make sure that every single student gets the education that they so richly deserve.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny.
Talk a little bit tonight about the board's role and what is governance? You know, the board governs with our superintendent, and it's really made up of three things. Long-term planning, and I hope people are aware that we're doing some strategic planning for our district for the next five years right now. Short-term planning, looking at our budget annually, looking at our LCAP, I don't know how many people know about the Local Control of Gunibility Plan, but, you know, what are the strategies that we're implementing on a short-term basis to reach those long-term goals? And then really, performance monitoring. Are we monitoring our student outcomes? Some of them academic, some of them more social-emotional. Are we monitoring our fiscal outlook? And I think I have skills and experience, you know, knowledge that I've gained over the years on the board and as an active parent to meet those roles. Thank you.
Mr. Malone.
It comes down to two questions, right? That's what all of you want to know about all of us sitting up here. One, can we do the job? And two, what can we do for you? I hope tonight, from the questions you've asked, that you have some faith in me. And if you have more questions, please contact me. My cell phone number is 626-893-0787. I want to make sure everyone knows I'm approachable. If you didn't get that, go to my website and get ahold of me. I think it's really important that we're always approachable. I can give you a list of my endorsements. I'm in Altadena, but I'm not going to waste that much time. I have all the leadership of Altadena because I've been on the council for so long, everything from Catherine Barger to all the series of unions because I'm a working-class man that's worked my whole life, and I've got all the labor behind me, so forth and so on. But what I think is really important is, is can I do the job? If you look at the things I've done, Save the Station, writing, supporting PUSD, all the things, and I can go on, but before I run out of time, I want to show you my favorite endorsement of all, and I want to show you this because it's really, really important to me. It's from a PUSD student, and it's my daughter.
Thank you.
And I just want to show you that.
Thank you.
That's my favorite one. And if you have questions, let me know.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for taking the time and the effort to be part of this forum. The League's voter service goal is to promote an active and informed electorate. And we hope that tonight we have succeeded in helping you to be better informed about your choices in this election. But now we have to turn things over to you for the involved part, the active part. Please participate in our democracy by casting your vote, and urge your friends and family to do the same. And here's some dates to remember. Actually, they started mailing out ballots a couple days ago. I just got mine. Early voting, if you want to trek down to Norwalk on the 10th today, you can start voting in Norwalk. The vote centers will be open on the 29th, and you can go to the county website and find out where the vote centers are. And if you decide to vote by mail, make sure that you sign your ballot envelope and make sure that it's postmarked no later than midnight on November 8th. So for more information about polling locations and to check whether your ballot's been received and counted, you can go to lavote.gov. And we actually have a document out front on the table that has information about that. And we also have information out on the table, our pro and con documents that talks about all the ballot measures, and just giving both sides of that. So that's also in some information. And if you found this forum valuable and would like to get more involved, we'd love to have you be a League member. And after saying that, thank you and good night.
All right. So thank you, Ms. Davis, for your service tonight. And with that, we bring our Unified Forum to a close. But remember, engagement in the future of your public schools does not end with a mark on the ballot come November 8th. It's only the beginning. Together, unified in commitment to advocate for our children, we can all make a difference. And so we ask every member of our audience to make a personal commitment to engage even further. In the hallway, there will be information or representatives about each of the sponsors of this event. For those of you at home, you can access us, that information on unifiedforum.com to learn more about each engagement group and join us in our respective missions. We've also submitted to each candidate some of the questions that were not able to be answered tonight. And when we receive those answers, we will post them to the website. Thank you for your support, and have a wonderful evening.